Good evening. This regular meeting of February 8th, 2021 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of a character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please. Bradley.
Here.
Donahue.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman. And we will start with the President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 11th, the work session on January 27th, and the special meeting on February 1st, 2021, as submitted.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 11th, the work session on January 27th, and the special meeting on February 1st, 2021, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that takes us to board salutes, and I believe our members in the boardroom have some. Ms. Bradley, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I certainly, on our behalf, like to say congratulations to Thomas Jefferson Middle School's 6th grader Abigail Schmidt, who was among three students in the state awarded scholarships from the Iowa Agriculture Literacy Foundation and funded by the Iowa Pork Producers Association. Abigail received $400 to support her research and present her work at one of the four science fairs and symposiums hosted in Iowa. She's researching animal behavior and moving pigs efficiently, appropriate in a state known for its hog concentration. She will research safe and proper ways to move pigs from one facility to another. She'll study animal behavior to get an understanding of what triggers pigs to move and the best practices to direct pigs in a safe manner. Through this research, she hopes to create a new system to move pigs on the farm. As a person who grew up on a farm and helped move lots of hogs around, I really heartily say congratulations to Abigail on this award, and we offer kudos to Abigail's teacher Emily Canfield for supporting and encouraging Abigail's work. Bravo.
Ms. Prohaska.
Yes. I have a word salute that goes out to the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, which helped secure a $20,000 grant from the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque's Disaster Recovery Fund to support the purchase of 13 classroom swivel cameras and 25 iPads. In addition, the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools provided an additional $1,800 to support the purchase of six additional iPads. The generous support of these organizations will provide additional technology to support student learning during these unprecedented times.
Yes, the Foundation of Dubuque Public Schools has been a great friend to the Dubuque Community School District.
And those swivel pads, I've worked with those, they're really good. They follow your voice and teacher so that as you move around, you're online. Good technology. Thank you.
Ms. Parks.
I have two, I just added one. So hopefully I'm not stealing anyone else's, but the one I'm adding is a board salute to the staff and teachers at Prescott Elementary School. That one or that one? They planned a really fun family bingo night via Zoom at the end of January. Over 100 families participated with their students, and because of that, Mrs. Sullivan, the principal, kissed a baby goat, and I believe there is a video of that on Facebook, if anyone wants to check that out. It was a really fun way to build community at a time where that's really difficult to do. So lots of kudos to the staff and teachers who put that together. Also, a board salute goes out to the district's food and nutrition staff members who mobilized during the strong winter storm last week to provide no-cost meals for students. This team braved the elements to enact the district's inclement weather meal delivery plan to ensure that students who needed meals have access to them. 170 individuals accessed the lunch and breakfast meals during the pickup times. This effort is another great example of the important role schools play in our community above and beyond our educational programming. Kudos to everyone involved in that. That was a lot of snow.
That's awesome. Great. Thank you. Mr. Sancy.
Okay. Mine's... No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. A board salute goes to Hempstead High School, which earned the College Board AP Female Diversity Award for the Computer Science A course. Schools honored with the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award have expanded girls' access in AP Computer Science courses. Hempstead was one of 232 schools recognized in the category of AP Computer Science A and is the only Iowa school in that category. This recognition is one example of our work across the district to broaden our students' perspective around the future possibilities that exist for them. Congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna go on to public hearing, and we'll start with an overview of the project of the Kennedy Playground Improvement.
Mr. Burkhardt.
Yeah, hi, everybody. The purpose of this project is to replace all the asphalt around the west and the south side of Kennedy Elementary. The existing asphalt's well beyond its 25-year design life and should be replaced. I also wanted to remind you while the project title has playground improvement in it, no playground equipment's being replaced at this time, and the area's not a parking lot either. This asphalt area is where the students line up, they use it for recess when it's too muddy. So again, it's on the west and the south side of Kennedy. During that time, we're gonna replace some chain link fencing and a lot of dead trees that are there, and the benefit of this will be it's gonna improve the storm water runoff. And if you approve this, the project will start June 7th and has to be completed before August 13th. And if there are no questions, I'll be back after the public hearing to report the bids.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project and authorize payment of legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll open it up to public comment if there's anybody online.
If there's anybody on the Zoom meeting who wishes to speak specifically about this project, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. Seeing none.
I move that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted, adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And the review of the bids, please.
Okay, well, seven bids were received and opened and read aloud on January 28th after 2:00 PM. They were well-prepared, and there were no bidding irregularities. So the bids are Smith Dirt Works, $208,435.42. Ports and Construction Company, $265,474.95. McDermott Escavating, $201,862.05. Mainline Escavating, $203,334.75. Kleesner Construction, $202,588.85. Eastern Iowa, $227,296.70. And the lowest bid, Drew Sun... excuse me, Drew Cook &amp; Sons Excavating, $179,677.40. Buildings and Grounds and WHK Engineers are recommending awarding the contract to Drew Cook &amp; Sons. They've worked for the district before and will be happy to work with them.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project. We recommend it and further outline the authorizing resolution to Drew Cook &amp; Sons Excavating of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $179,677.40.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Kennedy Elementary School Playground Improvements Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Drew Cook &amp; Sons Excavating of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $179,677.40. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye and a thumbs up.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And that takes us now to visitors and open forum, and we'll start with the Energyistic Environmental Excellence Award, so...
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity for us to present for you here tonight. My name is Bob Heron. I'm an energy consultant and also serving as your client manager here in Dubuque Community Schools. I'd like to have my colleague introduce herself, please.
I'm Abby Hammond. I'm the energy specialist for the district.
All right. We wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't give the thank yous to everyone. So to the board members, to leadership, to the teachers and staff, this program wouldn't be successful without all of you. We know you have a strong commitment to your financial resources and being good stewards, but tonight, we recognize being good stewards of your environmental impact. Examples of that's here on the plaque is reduction of greenhouse emissions from miles driven equal to 3,872,911. Greenhouse gas emissions of 554 tons of waste recycled, and carbon sequestered from trees grown for more than 10 years amounting to 26,406. So on behalf of our founder and CEO, Dr. William S. Spears, I present you with Environmental Excellence Award. Congratulations.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Yep.
I move...
Wait.
Just to check to make sure there's no one else.
We didn't do the motion the first time. Sorry.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Now you can see if there's anybody online. If there's anyone on the Zoom meeting who wishes to address the board tonight, you can do so now. Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom so that we can enable you to speak. Seeing none.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items any board members wish to have pulled? There being none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Just maybe one second to point anything out, but just the retirement for next year or in the personnel part, and we'll have a chance to go through and celebrate the folks on that list at a later date, but there are some real fixtures in the district that are taking retirement this year. And so didn't want anybody who's either here in the room or paying attention on Zoom to think we didn't see your names on there. We absolutely do, and some celebrations to be had when we get closer to the end of the year. But a lot of hard work to replace some folks who've done just an amazing job for the school district, and it'll be impossible to replace them, but we'll try.
I'd just like to add that retirement is always a bittersweet thing. There's a lot of talent listed on that list.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That indeed. All right, that does take us to our facilities and Support Services Committee report. Ms. Parks.
All right, so we have five items today that we can go through. First, I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hempstead Intercom Replacement Project and set the time, date, and location as April 5th, 2021, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid, 2012 International School Bus, and set the date, time, and place for public hearing as March 8th, 2021, at 5:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items any board members wish to have pulled? There being none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Just maybe one second to point anything out, but just the retirement for next year or in the personnel part, and we'll have a chance to go through and celebrate the folks on that list at a later date, but there are some real fixtures in the district that are taking retirement this year. And so didn't want anybody who's either here in the room or paying attention on Zoom to think we didn't see your names on there. We absolutely do, and some celebrations to be had when we get closer to the end of the year. But a lot of hard work to replace some folks who've done just an amazing job for the school district, and it'll be impossible to replace them, but we'll try.
I'd just like to add that retirement is always a bittersweet thing. There's a lot of talent listed on that list.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That indeed. All right, that does take us to our Facilities and Support Services Committee report. Ms. Parks.
All right, so we have five items today that we can go through. First, I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hempstead Intercom Replacement Project and set the time, date, and location as April 5th, 2021, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Ports and Construction Company for the central kitchen oven replacement project in the amount of $265,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the sale of Roosevelt Gym/ Sport uniforms that are no longer of use to the district, to students using... oh, sorry, PBIS tickets, and to staff for a nominal fee.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the sale of Roosevelt Gym Sport uniforms that are no longer of use to the district, to students using PBIS tickets, and to staff for a nominal fee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. And that takes us now to Ed Programs Policy Committee. Mr. Sancy.
Yes, thank you. So we got an update of a few things. The first one, Ed and Mimi came and they provided a new tool that the district will be using for teachers to examine their emotional learning, so it's part of their personal empowerment training. And this training will allow teachers to focus on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skill, responsible decision-making, and really learning how to connect also with the students. So the tools that they will be learning will also be taught to the students on how they can regulate their motion as well. We also received an update from the superintendent about the return to learn update and basically how we will adapt and make sure that students and teachers come in safely and what we can and cannot do during that process. We also had an update, kind of an annual update on our student fees, and then we also reviewed some policies, and that was kind of the gist of our meeting.
Great. Thank you. And that takes us to new business. And as everybody knows, the discussion, at least around our tables, have been about the voucher system that is going on, being talked about within the legislature, and we have decided as a board to put forth a resolution on this. And so there is a motion here about that resolution.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution opposing Senate File 159 or any legislation or similar effort to create a voucher program in Iowa that would divert money intended for public education to private entities.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution opposing Senate File 159 or any legislation or other similar effort to create a voucher program in Iowa that would divert money intended for public education to private entities. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say the resolution is short, to the point. I'd like to also commend our fellow colleague Anderson for his fine editorial in Telegraph Herald regarding this topic.
Absolutely.
And it's something that we need to have our citizens in our district informed about as well, so we need to get the message out, to get to their congressmen, and voice their opinions in regard to this, because this is actually going to be a detriment to our public school funding if this continues to a large extent.
Mike, would it be safe to say that if anyone needs help being able to contact their Iowa legislators, someone here could offer that assistance?
Yes, absolutely, and we also have a page posted on our website that includes contact information for all of the legislators who've got contact, who cover the district, as well as the state's resource that allows for contact of any state legislator.
Excellent. So if someone were to go to the website, where would they...
There is actually an advocacy button right on the main page. If you click on that, it will take you right to that page.
Perfect. As Jim said, we really urge the citizens of Dubuque to reach out to Iowa legislators and really oppose what is, we call the vouchers, vouchers, which is also known as a student savings plan. Call it what you will, it seeks to divert public funds from public education to private use of the money with two different standards for use of the money and with very different levels of accountability. I think it's an imperative. I appreciate that this board is taking a position, I know we haven't voted yet, but assuming that there will be support sufficient for passing this motion, I think it's imperative that we call on others in our community and across the state, really, to step up and advocate for public education, not for less funding for public education, which is what this would, Senate File 159 would bring about, but in fact, an increase to public education so that those things that are now being inadequately funded and decisions that could have to be made as we go forward because of the absence of fuller funding, that this, Senate File 159, would only make a concerning situation worse. No one wants that, I don't believe, for the public school system in Dubuque. We're a proud system that does phenomenal work with and for the children of Dubuque, working with the families and the community, and it would be a very erosional thing for us to see funding subjugated in this way. So we ask for your... I ask for your support.
Yeah, no, I agree, and it's the fact that the public schools are held to such standards of accountability for every dollar that we spend, and to be able to say that you can take these dollars and there's no accountability, that's not even playing field at all. And that is my biggest sticking point with all of this, is if you want to do that, then accountability should come along with it, and there's a lot that goes with it. We don't turn any student away, and private schools can turn students away for whatever reason they choose. And where will those students that get turned away go? Back to public school. So there's a big concern that I have with that as well, so I think this is a good statement from the board to be able to be making should we pass this. Anything else?
I agree. I just feel like, you know, public schools, especially in our community, have been such a resource for families during the last, what it feels like 10 years, but it's really been 10 months, and more funding is what is needed for public schools across the state, not less.
Agreed.
I'd just like to borrow our superintendent's comment regarding this, as far as we'd like to have competition, but we want to make sure we play with the same rules.
Yep. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion does carry.
Any board member or administrative issues not on the item, on the agenda? Mr. Rangann.
Just a couple of quick things about return to learn or coming back to school. As you all know, we'll be back in school full-time on Monday morning, barring maybe some cold weather, and so we do look forward to having all of our students back, but I want to make sure parents know that we've taken every safety precaution that we can. We won't be able to do the full social distancing, but we are working on ways to keep our students separated, as well as staff and students. There have been some questions asked about masks since the drawback of the mask mandate at the state level. We will still be requiring masks on students. We required them long before the state required them, and we will continue to, so just wanted to clear that up. Also, probably the most exciting thing is that the board, the Dubuque Education Association, our local legislators, and the county board of supervisors work really hard to make sure that teachers, and not just teachers, all of our staff members have an opportunity for vaccines at the earliest possible moment as students come back to school. So we're happy to know that 1,400 of our folks will receive vaccines this week, which is a significant number, and that the remainder of our team will have an opportunity for vaccines the following week. So within the next two weeks, our team will have had an opportunity to get the first vaccine, which we know it's a two-vaccine scenario, but the first vaccine does offer some significant protection, and it is certainly a step in the right direction. So with the mitigation efforts in place, with masks, with the adults in the situation vaccinated if they so choose, I think we're in the best possible... we're in the best place we possibly can be with the situation. So really, really pleased to see that educators were made a priority for receiving vaccines this week and next.
Great.
That's great.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution offering for sale by public bid a 2012 International School Bus and set the date, time, and place for public hearing as March 8th, 2021, at 5:30 p.m. at the Dubuque Community School District. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Dubuque Board... Oh, sorry. I move that the Board of Education authorize the district to levy property tax for the fiscal year 2021-2022 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 257.14 Code of Iowa.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the district to levy property tax for fiscal year 2021-2022 for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under Section 257.14 Code of Iowa. Is there any discussion? This is just the regular...
Budget guarantee is another term that we use for this. And what it is, is it guarantees us 101% of the current year's budget for funding for the next year based on the proposal by the governor and what was in one of the houses. That is not... But with our decrease in enrollment, we will be under the budget guarantee for the upcoming year.
Yes. Great. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
All right. Finally, I move that the Board of Education approve the sale of Roosevelt Gym/sport uniforms that are no longer of use to the district, to students using PB/IS tickets, and to staff for a nominal fee.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the sale of Roosevelt Gym/sport uniforms that are no longer of use to the district, to students using PB/IS tickets, and to staff for a nominal fee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And that takes us now to Ed Programs Policy Committee. Mr. Sancy?
Yes, thank you. So we got an update of a few things. The first one, Ed and Mimi came, and they provided a new tool that the district will be using for teachers to examine their emotional learning. So it's part of their personal empowerment training. And this training will allow teachers to focus on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skill, responsible decision-making, and really learning how to connect also with the students. So the tools that they will be learning will also be taught to the students on how they can regulate their emotion as well. We also received an update from the superintendent about the return to learn update and basically how we will adapt and make sure that students and teachers come in safely and what we can and cannot do during that process. We also had an update, kind of an annual update, on our student fees. And then we also reviewed some policies, and that was kind of the gist of our meeting.
Great. Thank you. And that takes us to new business. And as everybody knows, the discussion, at least around our tables, have been about the voucher system that is going on, being talked about within the legislature. And we have decided as a board to put forth a resolution on this. And so there is a motion here about that resolution.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution opposing Senate File 159 or any legislation or similar effort to create a voucher program in Iowa that would divert money intended for public education to private entities.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution opposing Senate File 159 or any legislation or other similar effort to create a voucher program in Iowa that would divert money intended for public education to private entities. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say the resolution is short, to the point. I'd like to also commend our fellow colleague, Anderson, for his fine editorial in Telegraph Herald regarding this topic.
Absolutely.
And it's something that we need to have our citizens in our district informed about as well. So we need to get the message out, to get to their congressmen, and voice their opinions in regard to this. Because this is actually going to be a detriment to our public school funding if this continues to a large extent.
Mike, would it be safe to say that if anyone needs help being able to contact their Iowa legislators, someone here could offer that assistance?
Yes, absolutely. And we also have a page posted on our website that includes contact information for all of the legislators who contact, who cover the district, as well as the state's resource that allows for contact of any state legislator.
Excellent. So if someone were to go to the website, where would they?
There is actually an advocacy button right on the main page. If you click on that, it will take you right to that page.
Perfect. As Jim said, we really urge the citizens of Dubuque to reach out to Iowa legislators and really oppose what is, we call the vouchers, vouchers, which is also known as a student savings plan. Call it what you will. It seeks to divert public funds from public education to private use of the money with two different standards for use of the money and with very different levels of accountability. I think it's an imperative. I appreciate that this board is taking a position... I know we haven't voted yet, but assuming that there will be support sufficient for passing this motion, I think it's imperative that we call on others in our community, and across the state, really, to step up and advocate for public education, not for less funding for public education, which is what this would, Senate File 159, would bring about, but in fact, an increase to public education so that those things that are now being inadequately funded and decisions that could have to be made as we go forward because of the absence of fuller funding, that this, Senate File 159, would only make a concerning situation worse. No one wants that, I don't believe, for the public school system in Dubuque. We're a proud system that does phenomenal work with and for the children of Dubuque, working with the families and the community. And it would be a very erosional thing for us to see funding subjugated in this way. So we ask for your... I ask for your support.
Yeah. No, I agree. And it's the fact that the public schools are held to such standards of accountability for every dollar that we spend. And to be able to say that you can take these dollars and there's no accountability, that's not even playing field at all. And that is my biggest sticking point with all of this is if you want to do that, then accountability should come along with it. And there's a lot that goes with it. We don't turn any student away. And private schools can turn students away for whatever reason they choose. And where will those students that get turned away go? Back to public schools. So there's a big concern that I have with that as well. So I think this is a good statement from the board to be able to be making should we pass this. Anything else?
I agree. I just feel like, you know, public schools, especially in our community, have been such a resource for families during the last, what it feels like 10 years, but it's really been 10 months. And more funding is what is needed for public schools across the state, not less.
Agreed.
I'd just like to borrow our superintendent's comment regarding this as far as we like to have competition, but we want to make sure we play with the same rules.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion does carry. Any board member or administrative issues not on the item, on the agenda? Mr. Rangan?
Just a couple of quick things about return to learn or coming back to school. As you all know, we'll be back in school full-time on Monday morning, barring maybe some cold weather. And so we do look forward to having all of our students back, but I want to make sure parents know that we've taken every safety precaution that we can. We won't be able to do the full social distancing, but we are working on ways to keep our students separated, as well as staff and students. There have been some questions asked about masks since the... You know, the drawback of the mask mandate at the state level. We will still be requiring masks on students. We required them long before the state required them, and we will continue to. So just wanted to clear that up. Also, probably the most exciting thing is that the board, the Dubuque Education Association, our local legislators, and the county Board of Supervisors work really hard to make sure that teachers... Not just teachers, all of our staff members have an opportunity for vaccines at the earliest possible moment as students come back to school. So we're happy to know that 1,400 of our folks will receive vaccines this week, which is a significant number, and that the remainder of our team will have an opportunity for vaccines the following week. So within the next two weeks, our team will have had an opportunity to get the first vaccine, which we know it's a two-vaccine scenario. But the first vaccine does offer some significant protection, and it is certainly a step in the right direction. So with the mitigation efforts in place, with masks, with the adults in the situation vaccinated if they so choose, I think we're in the best possible... We're in the best place we possibly can be with the situation. So really, really pleased to see that educators were made a priority for receiving vaccines this week and next.
Great.
That's great.
Well, I'd say big kudos to the superintendent and his team for really pushing that behind the scenes. You know, you do a lot of work to make that happen. So thank you for your leadership on that.
We're here nowhere without our team, so we've got to keep them healthy.
Thank you. Any other items? All right, there being none, we are adjourned.